Good morning, everyone. I’m Lisa Bender. I’m the president of the Minneapolis City Council. And before our regular meeting this morning, we have a special presentation. I’m going to turn this over to Councilmember Johnson to present a resolution in honor of youth climate leadership.
Thank you, Council President Bender. We have really seen this amazing -- well, a lot of you, I see some environmental T-shirts out here in the audience today related to sustainability. And I’m sure you’re here for our resolution that’s happening today. And I know we have a press conference later as well. But we’re really in this historic moment where we’re seeing youth stepping up and leading on issue after issue. And we wanted to take a moment today to really honor and recognize the youth in our city that are leading on environmental issues, on issues of climate justice. And we’re joined here today by Sophia and Ethan from the I Matters Group. And I’m going to read this resolution, and then we’ll turn it over to you two for any comments. The resolution is a Youth Climate Leadership Resolution. The Minneapolis City Council recognizes the leadership and vision of local youth on the issue of climate change and is committed to protect them and future generations from the risks of climate destruction. Whereas, across the world, people are facing new and challenging environmental problems daily, such as pollution, depletion of natural resources, and loss of biodiversity, making communities across the globe, including our own, vulnerable to potential disasters and tragedies. And whereas, the United States has withdrawn from the landmark Paraclimas Agreement, leaving the issue of countering climate change to states and municipal governments. And whereas, the greatest burden resulting from an inadequate response to climate crisis will be carried by the youngest generation and those of low socioeconomic status. And whereas, the risks from an inadequate response are potentially devastating and include economic and environmental disruptions which are already being felt, such as more severe storms, longer and hotter heat waves, worsening flood and drought cycles, growing invasive species and insect problems, accelerated species extinction rates, rising sea levels, increased wildfires, and a dramatic increase in refugees from climate-impacted lands. And whereas, leading climate scientists have indicated that further delay in significantly reducing greenhouse gas emissions will rapidly push humanity past the point where disastrous consequences can be avoided. And whereas, the Minneapolis City Council commends local youth for their leadership in naming these issues and proactively calling for change. And whereas, the Minneapolis City Council encourages these and other youth leaders to stay engaged and involved on these issues and other issues facing the city as constituents, advocates, and by serving on boards and commissions to help the city be a part of youth-inclusive democracy. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis continues its commitment to environmental sustainability and leading efforts related to climate change through creating efficiencies, increasing resiliency, and supporting quality of life for the present and the future, including decreasing greenhouse gas emissions, increasing municipal energy, creating green jobs, recovering more recyclable materials, and reducing air pollution. And whereas, the city government also is committed to innovating and results-driven business practices to maintain and enhance the ability of our city, including integrating sustainable principles and indicators. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council that this resolution recognizes the leadership of our youth and commends their vision for action to protect our environment and continues our commitments to sustainable practices and policies that will protect these youth and their generations after them. Excellent. Please, any words?
I don’t know.
Oh. Yeah, well, I’d like to thank Councilmember Johnson so much for writing this resolution, letting us look it over, and acknowledging youth’s role in fighting climate change, as well as Robin Garwood for working with us on the passage of the resolution through the PC Committee, as well as all of the council members with whom we’ve engaged in a really productive dialogue and have really given us a seat at the table through the CAC Commission and through letting us and helping us through the process of addressing this body. We think this resolution is a really pivotal and crucial step in terms of helping youth’s involvement in fighting climate change. When we testified before the PC Committee, we received some good feedback from councilmembers Jenkins and Cunningham regarding making sure that all youth are involved in this process to make sure that we’re representing everyone who’s in this city. And we think a resolution like this will really help strengthen our commitment and resolve to making sure that we can really have all youth represented in this process and ensuring that we are able to continue pushing action on climate change. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, it’s been a really interesting experience, and it’s really glad to -- or nice to see it actually get a resolution passed. And we’ve actually had over 1,000 students sign our petition, and we’ve had over 35 businesses and organizations, including 18 neighborhood associations endorse us. So, to see that this support actually gets us somewhere is really, really cool. And we’re going to keep pushing for more aggressive climate policies. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let’s give a hand to the folks who are leading the way. Okay. Good morning. I will now call to order our regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. I’m Lisa Bender. I’m the president, and today is April 27, 2018. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Pal Masano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich is absent. Fletcher.
Present.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum for today’s council meeting. Before we begin the official business, I want to welcome four special guests to our meeting today and to the city of Minneapolis. We have a really special program for young professionals who are leaders in their communities focused on governance and society, and they’ve joined us for the next four weeks here in Minneapolis. They’re here today for our council meeting, and then over the next number of weeks, they’ll be exploring ideas about budgeting and community engagement with a particular focus on youth engagement. And each of these are really outstanding leaders in their own communities, and we hope that they’ll be inspired by some of what they see here, and we hope to be also inspired by the work that they’re doing home. And so, we have from Cambodia with us, Kim Hang Tan. She is the president of the Khmer Youth Association, and she manages the organization’s efforts to educate and connect Cambodian youth to their government and to work to increase youth civic participation. We have from Laos, Natapon Le Levanta. They can correct me if I’m wrong. Mr. Levantana is the director of the Civil Service Planning Division in the Ministry of Home Affairs, and he works there as the director to research laws on civil service and overseeing national and local government restructuring and workforce planning. And he’s really interested in learning and sharing their experience with workforce development programs. From Malaysia, we have Zem Monzani, the co-founder and chairperson of the Nation Building School. And he has a number of roles there, also working in the Ministry of Finance, where he’s the assistant manager at the Middle Asian Global Innovation and Creativity Center. And he’s interested in working on connecting entrepreneurs and corporations for game-changing initiatives in Malaysia. And he’s also working to implement a civil warrior project to raise civil awareness among teenagers in Malaysia. And then finally, from Myanmar, we have So Sandy Lin. She’s the project officer at Save the Children International, based in Myanmar. And the project is dedicated to generating useful and actionable information to drive policy change and an evidence-based platform for advocacy. And she is really interested in particularly connecting folks to budget and learning about how we can make budgets more transparent and open and inclusive for public participation. So, we look forward again to working with each of them. For my colleagues, I will say, we get to invite them to anything interesting in our wards or the community. And again, we look forward to learning as well from all of you and the work that you’re doing. So, thank you for joining us today. With that, we will go ahead and see if there are any amendments to the agenda that’s before us for today’s meeting. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries the motion. The agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting of April 13. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. The minutes are accepted. Finally, we have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. The referrals are made. The next order of business is reports from our standing committees. We have first, the report of the Committee of the Whole, presented by the committee chair, Council Vice President Jenkins. I’ll also note that we’ve been joined by Mayor Fry.
Thank you, Madam President. And the Race Equity Subcommittee meeting as the prelude to the Committee of the Whole. And I am moving the adoption of 14 candidates to serve on the Race Equity Advisory Committee. And we had a recent addition, and I want to know Kenya McKnight, seat five, from Ward five, for a two-year term beginning May 1, 2018, ending April 30, 2020, along with the following two appointments for two-year terms, beginning May 1 and ending 2018. Larry Pinkney, seat one, Ward one. Noel Gordon Jr., seat two, Ward two. Cameron Lindsay, seat three, Ward three. DA Bullock, seat four, Ward four. Jocelyn Shardlow, seat six, Ward six. Arthur Himmelman, seat seven, Ward seven. Mershan Sadar, seat eight, Ward eight. Emmanuel Ortiz, seat nine, Ward nine. Jim Meyer, seat 11, Ward 11. And Sholanda Clark, seat 12, Ward 12. Kate Redden, seat 13, Ward 13. And also confirming the mayoral appointment of Aaron Hill, seat 14, Ward five. Are there any questions? I will move this for adoption by the council.
Council Vice President has moved the Committee of the Whole agenda and the agenda from the Race Equity Subcommittee. I think Mayor Fry wanted to make a comment.
Thank you so much, Council President, for the opportunity to speak. Special thank you to Council Vice President on all your work leading this Race and Equity Subcommittee. And I want to acknowledge the first committee meeting on Wednesday as part of the Committee of the Whole. I wanted to thank a bunch of people. Joy Marsh Stevens for her ongoing commitment to operationalizing the city’s equity and inclusion goals. And thank you to our esteemed guest presenters from Wednesday, and Dr. Rose Brewer and Jeff Hassan, and Leslie Baddoo for putting history front and center in this work. Thank you also to our committee members, who will make up the city’s first racial equity community advisory committee. I’m really honored by the two leaders who have agreed to serve as mayoral appointees as well. Aaron Hill, who’s a carpenter with the North Central State’s Regional Council of Carpenters, and the People of Color Union members, where he is engaged in outreach and empowerment for union employees. Actually, met Aaron on the north side while door knocking and was immediately impressed. The other mayoral appointment is Malia Connelly, who’s the director of Village Trust Financial Cooperative, the only Black-owned financial institution in the state. And we look forward to quite a bit of success from her and her organization. Also want to note Shontara Hardy, the commissioner, who’s done some extraordinary work, as well as Rox Anderson. As a city, we often talk about racial equity, the disparities between whites and people of color in just about every area. As mayor, it is my expectation that we move beyond talk and put these values into very clear action in every single department and every single decision we make. The level of harm inflicted on our communities was very precise and deliberate, and we need to make sure that that deliberateness and the precision is also matched in our policies. And racial equity includes implementing affordable housing solutions that address legacies of injustice. It includes policies, practices, and programs that facilitate the full economic incorporation of Black and Indigenous and immigrant communities. This is our work, and this is our time, and it is our responsibility to partner with residents, with for-profit and nonprofit communities to ensure that we realize the full potential of our city. I have a great deal of appreciation for the work that has already been done, but also the work that is going to take place. Again, thank you, Council Vice President, for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo all of your comments and sentiments. And, you know, as we work forward to move this really challenging agenda forward, I do want to just note that I failed to mention the mayoral appointment of Malia Connelly. I want to ensure that she is recognized. And really thank all of our residents who have stepped forward to advise the city as we embark on this journey. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I did speak at Committee of the Whole, but I just wanted to express my support for this and help note the significance of the step that we’re taking. We’ve, I think, been working more internally and inwardly facing about our racial equity work for a long time now. I appreciate the progress that we’ve made in the last couple of years, but I think this step to actually create a community advisory group to help us bring in more expertise from the community, viewpoints, and perspectives is going to help us enormously. I hope the group gets going up and running quickly. We have some big decisions even coming up this year, like our comprehensive plan. And I think the more eyes we can have looking at that and filtering it through a racial equity lens, the better off that we’re all going to be. I hope that our staff will work with these individuals, who are going to be volunteering their time and putting their passion and energy towards this work, and give them help and support as they help us shape a real action plan that will really make a difference, I think, in the city. Really appreciate the mayor being here and making comments today on this issue. I think that should signal to everybody within the enterprise and without the enterprise that closing the racial inequities or ending them and closing the disparities in our city is a top priority for all of us, and it’s probably going to take all of us and even more to actually get this work done because the embedded racial, I should say, the embedded racism that’s baked into our institution is devastating, and it’s time that we take the lead in making the changes that we need to make to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on the Committee of the Whole report? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 eyes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing eight items forward for approval this morning. Items one, two, three, and four have to do with licenses. Item five is a low bid. Item six are the applications for our environmental fund round, including grants from Hennepin County, the Met Council, and deed. And item number eight is our Great Streets Business Support Grant Agreements granting funding to a number of nonprofit small business organizations in the city. With that, I’ll move items one through eight for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved approval of the committee’s report. Are there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 eyes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee from Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing eight items forward for approval this morning. Items one, two, three, and four have to do with licenses. Item five is a low bid. Item six are the applications for our environmental fund round, including grants from Hennepin County, the Met Council, and deed. And item number eight is our Great Streets Business Support Grant Agreements granting funding to a number of nonprofit small business organizations in the city. With that, I’ll move items one through eight for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved approval of the committee’s report. Are there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Pal Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 eyes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. There’s two items that I will be moving forward from the committee. The first is a resolution authorizing submission of our 2018 Hennepin County Transgendered Development Applications to Hennepin County. And the second is passage of a resolution delegating authority to authorize and execute agreements for a 4D pilot initiative program. And I will move both items, and I see other folks are ready to speak. I’d also like to speak on item two. So, I don’t know if we want to see if anybody wants to pull anything else off first.
Councilmember Gordon, why don’t you go ahead and comment, and we can just vote on the report as one?
Okay. So, this 4D pilot program, there’s been some communication recently about it. There’s lots of complicated issues about getting here, but basically, this is an opportunity that we have to work with rental landlords that are already providing affordable housing to allow them to participate in a state program that would reduce their property taxes. In order for them to do that, they have to get some assistance from the city. So, this program would assist in paying and helping complete the applications to engage in this program in exchange for a commitment to maintain affordable units in their buildings. This is a pilot because we already technically missed the deadline to get in under the timeline for these properties to be affected, but we got permission to extend that deadline a little bit. So, we’re going to try it this year with a limited number of properties, and we’ve set the recommendation was to set the limit at properties that have at least 10 units. Well, at the committee, we talked about that limit and approached the subject because, of course, we know there’s lots of affordable units out there that are in duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. And I think we made the commitment as a committee that when the pilot is done and we get the reports back in August and September, we’re going to look at how we can expand this program. We’re hoping that we’ll see there’s a lot of interest in it. And a second piece of this that we also want to push out there is energy efficiency programs. We also think this is, the city now has more resources, but also so do the utility companies. So, we want to also reach out to these landlords who are providing affordable housing and let them know and bring to them resources that would allow them to lower their energy bills and also help us have an impact on climate change. So, I’ll be excited to hear the report when it comes back, and I think people should, if they care about it, and I know some people do, and want to see it changed in one way or another, keep communicating with us because we’re paying attention.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I want to just be a little bit more specific than Councilmember Gordon. I had spent a lot of time during the campaign talking to property owners in my ward and others about trying to do a 4D program. Unfortunately, the state of Minnesota certifies properties based on their classification with a deadline of March 31. And so, because of the election and the transition, and it took about, at least many of you know, a month to get everybody seated and on their committees and set up, we weren’t able to move forward any full program with any level of thought in that time period. Thanks to the mayor, who called the Commissioner of Housing, they agreed to allow us to extend the deadline by two months to a deadline of May 2. And I’m sure the mayor will speak to this. Another condition was that we would not submit more than 300 units total or five to seven actual applications. There’s a process that happens to certify your property, and they weren’t thrilled about doing this at all, but were willing to do it in a very minor level. In order for us to have some data to determine how we would move forward, we had to draw the line at 10 units because we did not want five, four-unit buildings moving forward and only have about 30 units included. We wanted to have as many units as possible. We know, as well as most researchers know, that a mass majority of affordable housing are in smaller units. And we had a long conversation in committee about this and why we wanted to extend it to units that were much smaller, but we simply can’t do it right now because Minnesota Housing will not allow it. And in fact, I think we, in a way, we should be grateful they allowed us to do anything. We will hopefully have enough units signed up. I understand there’s about 100 right now, which is why we’ve tried to put out so much publicity about this. I will note that the two that are in my ward are not wealthy landlords, quite the opposite. They live in the buildings, they have less than 15 units in their buildings, and they’re being pressured by the city assessor under state law to increase the value of their building, even though they refuse to increase rents. So, there are, contrary to popular belief, in the Lowry Hill neighborhood, units that are affordable to people at 60% or below of the metrowide median income that are naturally occurring. But when the assessor knocks on your door and says, “You shouldn’t be charging $800 for a one-bedroom. The market will demand $1,500, and we’re going to tax you,” as if you are getting $1,500, that’s the reason why we’re trying to provide this incentive. I don’t believe any of the big landlords or big developers would ever qualify for a program like this. This is not a giveaway to developers. It’s an acknowledgement that small property owners in between two and 100 units have a problem keeping their units affordable just based on rising property taxes. And so, we’re going to do this pilot program in order to gain some data and get into the system. I’ll note that we’ll have to have a full program rolled out before the end of the year because we’ll be back up against the deadline of certifying properties by March 31 of next year. So, there was no intent to leave anyone out. We were just trying to jump the gun and get going in advance of waiting an entire year. This is an extremely worthy effort. There’s been a lot of publicity, and people are calling and signing up. As Councilmember Gordon stated, we want to make changes too, but I don’t think we should do nothing now in order to do something fabulous later because we can do something now and something fabulous later, and we will have to do it in fairly short order.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a question. I was wondering, first of all, I’m excited about this. It’s definitely addressing a need and really being able to create space for folks to maintain naturally occurring affordable housing. My question, more specifically, is as I was reviewing all of this, all of the supporting documents, equity isn’t mentioned at all. And so, I’m curious as to what the racial and geographic equity framework will be for this pilot. I know we’re rolling it out kind of quick, but it’s still important for us to explicitly name what that’s going to look like. And so, I was just curious about what framework we are approaching this pilot with and if there are any measurables around racial or geographic equity.
That’s an excellent question, Councilmember. I could defer to the folks who’ve been leading on this, or we could just take it as a comment for what, as Councilmember Goodman described, as we formalize the process going forward, just make sure that that is really baked into the criteria that we’ll use in the future to recruit and select projects that we would then forward to the state. I don’t know if any other council members want to chime in on that, too.
I speak to management.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is a very innovative and creative way to help sustain naturally occurring affordable housing in our communities. I do encourage the committee to consider as well, how do we support tenants to increase their income to be able to afford the housing that is available? It has to be a both-and strategy, in my opinion, and I hope that my fellow colleagues and committee members will consider that as we are moving this program forward when the research comes back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Cunningham for that comment. I don’t really think it was necessarily a priority and a focus of the report as we were rushing to get this program running. I think that where it’s used, what did we do for outreach, because I think there’s easily, if we’re not looking at it through that kind of a lens, to absolutely miss the importance of that. I think that we can imagine there’s the goodwill and the good intentions of all of us here at the city to do the right thing, but I think we obviously have to be more conscious about those decisions. So, that’s something I think that I will commit to you to kind of keep my eye on and be bird-dogging it as we develop and hopefully roll out a bigger program next year. And I think because you even made that comment, we’re going to probably do a better job now of collecting the information about the few properties that do participate this year and figure out where they are in the city and what do the tenants and landlords look like or... So, thank you very much for bringing it up.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Previously at the state, in order to become, in order to apply, in order to come within the purview of the 4D program, there had to be some form of subsidy. And obviously, the vast majorities of, or majority of properties in Minneapolis that are naturally occurring don't have any subsidy attached. I mean, by their very nature, they're naturally occurring, and therefore, they don't have subsidy. And so what this allows is for the application fee that the city delivers, which is only 10 bucks, to be the form of subsidy that allows them to bring into the program. I think it's a good one, and I'm glad it's moving forward.
Thank you. And, you know, I'll just comment briefly. This is such a huge issue in my ward, and I'm really, really excited that we've added this to the long list of things that we are doing in the city of Minneapolis to fight back against displacement of renters that we've been seeing, you know, increasing year by year. We just had another housing study session yesterday, and one of the things that staff shared again was, even though last term we allocated millions of dollars to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing, because the nonprofit partners that we rely on to purchase those buildings aren't typically working with buildings of this size and scale, our funds aren't really being allocated as quickly as we would like, and they're not hitting this range of unit-sized buildings. So if you look through my ward, which is 80% rental, a lot of those folks are living in very small unit buildings, and, you know, it's not a critique of them at all, but the nonprofit partners that we would be offering the financing to are often focusing more on buildings in the suburbs that have 300 units in one building instead of a small apartment building with 16 units in Whittier, for example. And so this is another tool that we are able to use as we look at our housing market, which is rapidly losing units that are affordable to renters in the market. And right now in Minneapolis, we have about 20,000 units, I think our staff are estimating, that are affordable to families that would qualify for subsidized units in the market, privately owned, as Councilmember Goodman highlighted, often by, you know, regular people who live in the community, maybe who live in the building. And this is another tool that we have to try to very quickly get more of those units preserved for affordability in the long term and fight back against some of the bigger trends that are making landlords, even those who may want to hold their units affordable, starting to raise rents. So I'm really excited about this. I'm really grateful that we were able to quickly get a pilot going, and as we learn more from these things, I know we expect staff to come back to the committee, as the Chair, Chair Gordon mentioned, to give us more details about how we will advertise this in the future, how we'll select buildings, how we'll recruit landlords. And of course, we are also working on a number of things that are focused on protecting renters, including the ordinance that Councilmember Goodman is working on to give notice of sale to tenants to have more time to adjust to building sales, and the renter protection ordinance that many of us are working on. So I'm excited, and we've talked about this a lot, but I think it's important, and it's, again, one of the biggest issues that we hear from constituents, so I'm excited to see this as another tool. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worszami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins is absent.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender. There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Now we have the Public Health, Environment, and Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, chaired by Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, President Bender. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee brings forward eight items this week. The first is the reappointment of Civil Rights Director, approving the appointment, reappointment of, by the Executive Committee of Velma Corbell, to the appointed position of Director of Civil Rights for a two-year term beginning January 2nd, 2018. The second is the Minneapolis Community Environmental Advisory Commission appointment, approving the appointment of Michelle Shaw, seat 1, Ward 1. And three is community solar garden increasing subscription agreements with IPS Solar, Rena Solar, and US Solar. And we are looking to increase and authorizing an increase to the total amount of solar garden subscriptions held by the city from 12 million kilowatts annually to 20 million. And then the following staff direction was approved at the Ways and Means Committee on April 24th is staff direction to include a provision in future third-party municipal energy management contracts that each contractor commit to shifting the municipal property they maintain to 100% renewable energy. Four is a master contract amendment with Tubman, Pillsbury United Communities, North Point Health and Wellness Center, Inc., and the Family Partnership for Continued Health and Human Service Programs. Five is an agreement with Hennepin County to engage in local collaborative time-study revenue enhancement activities. Six is accepting a grant from HUD for lead remediation and healthy home services in the amount of $2.9 million to provide lead remediation and healthy home services for a minimum of 190 homes that meet the grant enrollment criteria. And then also approving matching contribution of 10% of the Lead Hazard Control Award in the amount of $250,000 within the department budget. Seven is a large block event and amplified sound permit for Ninja Warrior, May 19th through 28th, 2018. And number eight is the 100% renewable electricity resolution, a summary of discussion and feedback by the Clean Energy Partnership. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved approval of the PEE Committee. Councilmember Gordon.
I just wanted to speak on number eight.
Yes.
That's on the 100% renewable energy?
Sure. So why don't we take all comments on item eight first, and then see if there are comments on any of the other items? Go ahead, Councilmember Gordon.
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to acknowledge the significance of this, and it's actually pushing ourselves pretty far. This is actually a resolution that was, we started working on last year, so I want to give a tip of the hat to former Councilmember Frye, now mayor, and also his staff Heidi Ritchie for starting this ball rolling. We decided back then to take some time and send it through our Energy Vision Advisory Committee and also our Community Environment Advisory Committee to get some input on it. And we were fortunate enough also to get some input from outside and lots of discussion about it and really refining the ordinance well. I think one of the other big benefits of taking some time to wait to bring this forward is we then got the involvement of a couple other council offices who weren't on the council last year. So I really appreciate that Councilmember Fletcher got involved, and I think they deserve a lot of credit. But I also really think that their policy aides, Carly Weinman and Laura Dorley, really deserve a lot of credit for helping work through this and draft this resolution. And actually, if you look at the resolution, we're calling on ourselves, and our staff mostly, I suppose, to actually develop an action plan. And there's a long list of what's going to go into that plan to make sure that we can actually accomplish this, and it's not necessarily going to be easy, but I think it's something that's important that we do, and I think it's something that we're actually building from our climate action plan to do. It's called out there. This is something that we've already committed to try and to accomplish and recognize the importance of making an impact on climate change, and that's why this resolution makes total sense. And now, I think it also makes sense for us to roll up our sleeves and really deliver on the commitments that we make in the resolution, and I look forward to being part of that.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to second everything Councilmember Gordon has said, and just, it's been an absolute pleasure. I want to also thank his staff, Robert and Garwood, for this. It's just been fantastic, and the only thing I'd add is that it's really important to have this resolution come now when we have, at a time when federal and state policymakers are undermining our sustainability and resilience as a city, it's more important that we act locally to protect our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and thank you to Councilmembers Schrader and Gordon for your work on this. This has been a really important piece of work that we've been able to achieve, and I think what's crucial about it, as Councilmember Gordon alluded to, is that we took the time to really make sure this is something that we can actually get done and that we're really, this isn't a resolution to make us feel good. This is a resolution that really is sort of directing resources and it has a plan behind it to really achieve the goals that we're setting. It is a huge opportunity for us to keep some of the money that we pay in our utilities every month in the city for local generation. The economic impact of that, beyond the climate impact and all of the other good things about this, I think are very, very important to acknowledge, and the workforce impact and the opportunity to create a pathway to jobs in the new energy economy for people who have been traditionally marginalized from the old energy economy, I think is a huge opportunity and is something that we're really excited to dig in on and take action on. So thank you, everybody, for your support on this. Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham, for a really great opportunity in your committee to present on this and to invite community in to be part of that process, and I'm excited to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on item eight? Seeing none, other comments on any of the other items on the committee report? Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just comment on item number one, the reappointment of Civil Rights Director Velma Corbell. I do want to just acknowledge that there have been some, I think, significant concern about Director Corbell's role on the, in the Office of Civil Rights. And I believe that we have received some petitions that express that concern, but I want to ask those who are deeply concerned about the success of the Civil Rights Department, that they continue to work with the council and with Ms. Corbell to help make that department be the best that it can be, and really hope that they can bring their best thinking from the community to help us do this work better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do also want to comment on item number one, and I want to thank Ms. Corbell for her service to the city and her willingness to take on a really big job of directing our Department of Civil Rights in a time in Minneapolis where we've asked the department to do much more than in the past. And under her leadership, the department has caught up on a significant backlog of complaints. They have implemented new procedures and policies that we hope are working well, and if they aren't, we will work to continue to improve them. She's hired amazing leaders who are doing really important work in expanding our civilian oversight of the police department and working to make sure that we're investigating trends and making policy recommendations that have resulted in specific changes to our police procedures and policies. And the Civil Rights Department is also implementing the enforcement of a whole breadth of new workplace protection policies that the council adopted last year. And in a number of cities that have similar policies, they actually have an entirely separate department in the city that's tasked with enforcing them, but we're relying on a lot of existing staff with a couple of new FTEs that we were able to add, a very small budget allocation to the enforcement of major new laws, including the Earn Safe and Sick Time Law, our Minimum Wage Ordinance, and enhanced coordination with the state in enforcing wage theft. And so we're really thankful for the department to step up in this way. They were also critical in helping craft those ordinances and staffing our Workplace Advisory Committee. So as Council Vice President said, we know, we always have more work to do in this area, but I am thankful for the director's leadership and all of her staff who have really stepped up over the past number of years. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Bender. Council President, you covered the remarks, I think, quite aptly. I'll just make two additional comments, which are, one, that I, we actually brought a case to the Civil Rights Department many years ago through the firm that I was then working with, and, you know, there's every incentive to bring cases to the Civil Rights Department, that you can get double and, in some cases, treble damages for your client. But there was a really significant backlog. I think the backlog was, in fact, over 100 cases, and Ms. Corbell has worked tirelessly to reduce that backlog. Obviously, we're now implementing Earn Sick and Safe Time as well as Minimum Wage, and the enforcement mechanisms are critical. I mean, there's no faster way to erode the trust in government than to pass laws that you can enforce, and we are enforcing them in a stringent and necessary way. And so, yes, I ask for your support for Ms. Corbell. I think she's, the body of work speaks for itself, and I do hear some of the, I do hear the community concerns. In fact, I did vote against her four years ago, but I felt that the full body of work was necessary to move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on agenda items from the Peace Committee? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worszami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Before we move to the next committee, I just want to revisit the Housing Policy and Development Committee. Council Vice President had to step out for a second and would like her vote to be recorded for that committee. If there are no objections, we can simply allow the Vice President to voice her vote at this time.
Aye.
All right. Then we'll direct the clerk to please record that "aye" vote from the Council Vice President on each piece.
That means the committee report carried with 12 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That moves us now to the report from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, chaired by Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the Public Safety Committee has 14 items for approval today. The first item is a reappointment of our fire chief. The second one is a gift acceptance from the Illinois Emergency Management Association for travel-related expenses to the IESMA Training Summit. The third item is a gift acceptance from the Center for Police Equity for Travel-Related Costs to the 2018 Science of Justice Conference. The fourth item is a gift acceptance from the Auschwitz Institute for Peace and Reconciliation for the Minneapolis Police Department Travel-Related Costs to the National Seminar for Law Enforcement on Civil and Human Rights. The fifth item is a contract with SMG for the Minneapolis Police SWAT Officers to provide extra security during large-scale events at the US Bank Stadium. The sixth item is a contract with SMG for bomb detection and 911 dispatch services at US Bank Stadium. The seventh item is contract with SMG for law enforcement services in the neighborhoods adjacent to the US Bank Stadium at large-scale events. The eighth item is a contract with the Downtown Improvement District for the 2018 Minneapolis Downtown Improvement District Summer Police and Police Reserve Program. Ninth item is a contract with the Twins Ballpark LLC for bomb detection at Target Field. Next is a Minnesota GI Bill on the Job Training Apprenticeship Program Employer Payments. Then we have a grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for hazardous materials, emergency preparedness, and computer equipment and simulation software. The 12th item is a grant from the Minneapolis Foundation in support of the Emergency Medical Services Pathways Academy. The 13th item is the 2018 National Forensic Sciences Improvement Grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for the Minneapolis Police Department Crime Lab. And lastly, it's accepting a quote for the Total Containment Vessel with NABCO Systems LLC.
Thank you. Councilmember Kano has moved the Public Safety and Emergency Management Report. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. One last time, I promise. From the, I'd like to comment briefly on the reappointment of Chief Friedel. From the 35W bridge collapse in 2011 to the North Side tornado to the explosion at the Minnehaha Academy, Chief Friedel has, he's been there, he's been reliable, and his commitment to public safety and strong history for supporting our firefighters and their health are really beyond reproach. I mean, under the chief's leadership, the fire department launched the Emergency Medical Services Pathways Program to help reach more young people, especially students of color. And now every cadet class now includes 30% from the EMS Pathways Program. He launched that program back in 2014, and it's much stronger today. The current cadet class is 52% people of color and 15.8% female, another 57% are veterans. So these are clear results shown by the statistic, and the chief has really been at the forefront every step of the way, whether it's diversifying the workforce or it's making sure that our firefighters are safe, recognizing the carcinogens that are left on their clothes following a significant fire. So, you know, the chief has been with the department since 1979. He's done pretty much every single job you can think of, from firefighter, fire captain, battalion chief of duty, duty deputy chief, and deputy chief of training to assistant chief of operations. That's a mouthful, but it's a mouthful that is well-deserved. I ask for your support for Chief Friedel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any other comment on the committee report?
I will just also briefly echo the mayor's thanks to our chief for all of your service to our city and your willingness to continue to lead the department forward. As the mayor said, you know, we know that our fire department is top-notch and responding to the most terrible disasters in our community, and we're so thankful for your willingness to do that. But we also recognize that day in and day out, you're responding to the front lines of community stress and issues of all kinds. You know, you're the front lines on our response to our opioid crisis. You are there when an elderly person is calling 911 for a health issue. And as we look at our future of our department, I really have appreciated the way that the chief is doing two things, really even sort of above and beyond what we've asked. The first is working to diversify our department, and that can be seen in all of the statistics, but it can best be seen when the fourth graders from Whittier Elementary School come down to City Hall and are greeted with... to City Hall and are greeted with smiles and hugs and enthusiasm from our chief. They just light up, and you're inspiring those kids. It makes me emotional because those are kids who deserve to be inspired. They're the future of our city, and your commitment to them just really shines through. And second is planning for the future of a department that more and more is responding to the failure of every levels of government to provide health service to people. And, you know, the way that you are looking forward 10 and 20 years to understand how the level of financial commitment that we may be seeing from our city is really remarkable, and you're working with leaders from across the country, with local leaders, and making sure that we're planning in a way that is smart and efficient for your staff and also for our financial bottom line. So, thank you again, and I'll see if there's any other comment. Mayor Fry.
I also wanted to note, Council President, that today is a little bit bittersweet in that while we are reappointing Chief Friedel, we're also remembering our Assistant Chief Brentisson, who did an amazing job. He passed about a week ago. I believe the funeral is coming up early next week. He was an extraordinary public servant. He contributed so much to the community, both in terms of public safety as well as outreach, similar to Chief Friedel. If you ever saw that guy interact with kids, it was amazing. So, he will be sorely missed, and I'll just ask for kind of a very brief moment of silence, if that's all right, Council President.
Of course, and I'll just add that the assistant chief leaves behind a family. He had a fight with pancreatic cancer, and we know his family and his children are mourning him, and we join with the family and wish them peace, and we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. That brings us to the report of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and Councilmember Fletcher will be giving that report today.
Thank you, President Bender. We're bringing 14 items forward from Transportation and Public Works for council considerations. Morning. The first four items are project approval and assessment authorizations for resurfacing projects. The fifth item is an amendment to our bicycle sharing ordinance to lay the groundwork for a contract on dockless bike sharing that you should expect to see next cycle. Sixth is an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for landscaping improvements at Hennepin-Lindale at the split to Dunwoody Boulevard. Number seven is an application to host a Green Corps member. Number eight is PB Plaza and Orchestra Hall Park Use Restriction Removal and Easement Agreement. Items nine and 11 are accepting low bids for work around Bassett Creek. Item 10 is accepting the only bid for gray-black-colored Place A aggregate. Item 12 is accepting the low bid for the Minneapolis Parking Surveillance Project. Item 13 is accepting the low bid for Emerson and Fremont Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements Project, and item 14 is accepting the low bid for the Hennepin Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. I'll move all 14 items as recommended.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the TPW agenda. Are there any comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report of the Ways and Means Committee, chaired by Councilmember Warsani.
Thank you, Madam President. We have 22 items to bring forth today. Items number one to five are legal settlements. Item number six is a contract with Lifetech Services for Emergency Medical Services at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number seven is a contract amendment with Lifetech Services for Emergency Medical Services at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number eight is a contract amendment with the Center for Energy Environment for Building Benchmarking and Disclosure Services. Item number nine is an acquisition of 2629 University Avenue Northeast for the East Side Storage and Maintenance Facility Project. Item number 10 is a license agreement with Sulein Railroad Company for monitoring well at 2651 University Avenue Northeast. Item number 11 is a lease at Minneapolis Impound Lot for the State Highway Patrol Vehicle Storage. Item number 12 is a contract amendment with the Minneapolis Downtown Council for Downtown Activation Services. Item number 13 is a contract amendment with Goldberg Bonding for leased space in the Jerry Half Memorial Parking Ramp. Item number 14 is a contract amendment with Backbone Enterprises, Inc. for information technology IT audit services. Number 15 is a contract with Regents of the University of California for Combined DNA Index System use. 16 is a Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee Click Appointments. Number 17 is the first quarter 2018 Donation Report. Number 18 is a contract with Regents of the University of Minnesota for Traffic Management Services at TCF Bank Stadium. Number 19 is a transfer of 2018 funds from the City Coordinator's Office to the Health Department for Green Cost Share Program. Number 20 is another transfer of 2018 funds from the Community Planning and Economic Development to the Health Department for the Green initiatives cost share programming. Number 21 is 2018 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. This is a passage resolution amending and extending the meeting dates throughout May to accommodate the high number of appeals filed for review this year. And 22 is a business continuity and disaster recovery IT audit, and I happily move approval of all 22 items.
Councilmember Warsani has moved approval of the Ways and Means Report. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. I just wanted to flag the significance of item 20 as sort of modeling the behavior that we described in the resolution. This was exciting that it came through this cycle as we're passing the Clean Energy Resolution to be able to move money, and this was a cooperative effort with city staff between CPED and Public Health to identify one program that was underperforming and a compatible program in another department that had the capacity to get a lot more solar built with that money, and so, we were able to move resources. And staff were estimating that this is going to generate an additional 50 million kilowatt-hours of solar generation. So, this is a very exciting development, and I think is a good example of us walking the walk as we move forward, and I think it's very important that we just recognize that the resolution that we pass is going to take all of our city staff thinking creatively about how to move resources to this. It's going to take the city and philanthropy and private developers and the state and all of our partners and Excel and CenterPoint making investments in getting us to this goal, and so, very excited to see it starting to happen already.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the report of our Zoning and Planning Committee, presented by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Zoning and Planning Committee has two items for approval today. The first is rezoning at 2700 University Avenue Southeast, and the second is a vacation, alley-vacation resolution for the Block 17 in Calhoun Park, and I'll move both of these items.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report of the Ways and Means Committee, chaired by Councilmember Warsani.
Thank you, Madam President. We have, I believe, two items to move forward on the agenda, and that is the reappointment of the Commissioner of Health, Director of the Health Department, Gretchen Musikant, and the second item is the Civil Service Commission Appointments, receiving and filing the reappointments of the, reappointments by the Executive Committee of Christine Stewart Severt, I'm sorry, for seat two for a three-year term beginning March 1st, 2018, ending February 28th, 2021, and Macy Wheeler, seat three for a three-year term beginning March 1st, 2017, and ending February 28th, 2020. Second, referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the reappointment by the Executive Committee of Christine Severt for seat two for the setting of a public hearing, and referring to the Ways and Means Committee, the reappointment by the Executive Committee of Macy Wheeler, seat three for the setting of the public hearing. Move these items forward.
Thank you. The Vice President has moved the Executive Committee Report. I will just note on item one, that is referring to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee to set the public hearing at their next meeting, so the hearing for that will happen in about three weeks or so. And then, is there any discussion further on the report? Okay. Councilmember Cunningham is just verifying that the next committee meeting is next week, and then that's when the public hearing will be set for the future meeting. On May 14th will be the hearing for the Public Health Commissioner. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Seeing no more discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warsani.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the Notice of Ordinance Introduction. Today, we have two notices. One is a notice by Councilmember Johnson for introduction at the next regular meeting of the City Council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code related to air pollution environmental protection, amending provisions related to nuisance odor. The second is a notice offered by Councilmember Warsani for an ordinance to amend the city charter related to Article 9 related to debt and increasing borrowing limits for capital expenditures and permitting the combination of charter and state authority. So, there'll be a full presentation of this by our Finance Department at the next member, at the next meeting of the Ways and Means Committee. So, if anyone would like more information, you can get that from Councilmember Warsani or attend the Ways and Means Committee meeting. So, both of those notices are given. We have one item today on our introduction. Councilmember Warsani, did you want to? Councilmember Warsani.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a brief, semi-brief statement with regards to this notice of introduction. Just to update my colleagues, since 1973, the city bonds for municipal infrastructure and building issued under the city charter have been limited to $15 million per project. There was no inflation in that $15 million maximum approved 45 years ago. As you are aware, costs have increased over the decades. The city is reaching a point where a new fire station requires more than $15 million. The city has done many bond issues since 1973 for more than $15 million. This has required previous city council to use state statute that generally applies to cities in Minnesota or get special legislation for a bond issue. For example, our water plant in Fridley is spending more than $50 million that the city is issuing bonds for under a special law. I'm proposing a charter amendment to add an inflationary factor to the $15 million limit to encourage more use of the city's charter for bond issues. Bond issues under state statutes usually only require the city council to act and to pass the bond issue with a simple majority. A bond issue under our city charter requires a much higher bar, a supermajority vote of the council and four out of the six votes by the Board of Estimative Taxation. The approval of a project under the charter is more transparent process, which encourages more public review and scrutiny. I also think it builds public trust because we, as a council, would not be seen as avoiding a limit in our own charter. Another component of the charter change is to allow a combination of state statutes and charter bonds on those rare occasions where we may be issuing debt for large or multi-year projects, such as a renewable energy project, an affordable housing development, or the city hall renovations. Again, this encourages the use of the charter process rather than avoiding it altogether. As you all know and may be aware, a charter change requires many steps. I look forward to council input and feedback from the Charter Commission as well as the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warsani. Okay. Finally, we have one item on our introduction referral calendar, and that's a motion by Councilmember Johnson pursuant to previous notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code related to licenses and business regulations for the first reading and referral to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, adding a new chapter entitled Innovative Emerging Small Business Pilot Program. Any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and the subject matter is referred to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. That brings us to our resolutions. We have two resolutions today. The first is a resolution declaring May 6th through May 12th as Public Service Recognition Week, and the second is the resolution that we heard earlier, recognizing the leadership envisioned of local youth on the issue of climate change. So, I have a motion to adopt those resolutions.
Aye.
That has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those resolutions have been adopted. Finally, we have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. This cycle, I had the opportunity to attend the promotion ceremony for our Minneapolis Police, and I just wanted to extend my congratulations publicly to everyone who took on a new role, who was promoted to a new rank. I know this is an important moment in your career, and I just want to say it's a very